On the record.
Well, good morning. Today is the third day of October. Time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session. Commissioner Daley and our present Commissioner Davidson is absent. If we could get a identify yourself for the record starting over here.
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho.
Bethany Calley, HR.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Jared Left, Procurement.
Karen Sinclair.
Howie Hill, Procurement.
Alyssa Ellington, Procurement.
Problem's raining, Procurement.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Is this a procurement meeting? Go ahead.
Yes, it is. Kathy Corliss, Procurement.
Luke Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office. Beth Maun, Treasure.
Well, welcome. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to add items. Seven eleven A ratification of liquor insurance application and. Seven fourteen twenty six agreement number one three seven eight four six two three. And remove the employee recognition because she is ill and can't be here.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we're moving the we're now down to unfinished business. I'll take a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, y'all second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, we have a procurement achievement of. In excellence in procurement award. Achievement of excellence in procurement award for everybody in back row, almost everybody. For the procurement department. You want to explain that or should I read it? Go ahead.
If you have to, Mr. Chairman. So the National Procurement Institute has a program every year that. They accept accept applications from cities, counties, and states for their procurement programs. This one is the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. So it grades procurement departments on how well they have their processes defined. Their innovations, their professional development and e-procurement and some other categories as well. So you get graded in all these categories. What the award really does is exemplifies the professionalism of my staff and their commitment to professionalism. And for continuous process improvement. And so this is our third year in a row in a row with receiving this award. And we are the only government agency in the state of Idaho to ever get this award.
Well, congratulations. Yeah. Second law of the great trophy like. Oh, there it is. Oh, nice. And you got a trophy case down there.
We do. We're gonna have to do one now.
All right, now I understand you're gonna take a picture after the meetings, are you?
Yeah.
Because we're out. Okay. All right, well, good. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, now, and we need you to to tell us about this award of this bid.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, before you this morning, under unfinished business is the award of bid two three zero six nine. The Ada County Trial Court Administration Treatment Center Tended Improvement Project. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the eleven bids and was prepared to make an award recommendation today. But we received a protest from Radix Construction regarding this bid. And here's their email letter protest. And oops. And they are protesting based on them being non-responsible for not submitting a bid bond along with their bid submit. So therefore, we'd like to retable the award recommendation to the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three Open Business Meeting for further consideration. In the meantime, we will meet with you soon to discuss the protests and whether this protest has merit or not.
Okay, so they just simply didn't do their bid bond?
They didn't. No, they did not submit it.
And they are required to do a bid bond?
They are.
So.
And they're now protesting? They they're containing that they did or didn't or?
They know that they didn't. They but they're trying to claw their way back into this bid.
Okay, all right, well, so we need a motion to.
Yes, to retable to October tenth.
October tenth, all right.
I move to table award of bid twenty-three zero six nine Ada County Trial Court Administrative Treatment Center. Tended Improvement to October tenth, two thousand twenty-three for further consideration.
Second motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Take care, take care of that. Yeah. Okay, the next item up is. A proclamation. For an Idahoan who did something so rare, he was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. We're assigning this proclamation in advance of a joint meeting with Ada County and the city of Kuna scheduled for Wednesday evening at six P M. At Kuna City Hall. Part of that meeting will include a special recognition for the late Major Bernie Fisher. Bernie Fisher Park in Kuna is named after this exceptional human being. We're happy that Bernie Fisher's family will be there as well. We're pleased that Kuna accepted our invitation to do this joint meeting. And we hope you are able to attend the meeting or watch it streaming live YouTube on Kuna's YouTube channel. So with that. Would you read the proclamation?
Sure. Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho Proclamation. Bernie Fisher Day, October fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas March tenth, nineteen ninety-six.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. Thank you. That was way after the.
Yeah, a little after.
On March tenth, nineteen sixty-six, during the Vietnam War, the United States Special Forces Camp at Aotshao. Was under attack by two thousand North Vietnamese regular army regulars. And whereas other hostile troops had surrounded the camp and were continuously raking it with automatic weapons fire from the surrounding hills. And whereas the top of the fifteen hundred foot hills were obscured by a eight hundred foot ceiling limiting aircraft maneuverability. And forcing pilots to operate within hostile gun positions. And whereas Major Bernard Fisher announced his intentions to land on the airstrip and effect a rescue of his fellow airmen. Although aware of the extreme danger and likely failure of such an attempt, he elected to continue. And whereas Major Fisher's profound concern for his fellow airmen. And at the risk of his own life, above and beyond the call of duty. Are the highest traditions of the United States Air Force and reflect great credit upon himself and the Air Force and his country. And whereas Bernard Fisher Francis Fisher, known to his family and friends as Bernie Fisher. Was awarded the Congressional Medal Medal of Honor in. In nineteen sixty-nine by President Lyndon Johnson for conspicuous gallantry and at the risk of his life during the Vietnam War. And whereas the Congressional Medal of Honor is the highest military honor awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners, in recognition of this valiant act and distinguishing distinguished service. To the United States of America, do hereby proclaim October fourth, two thousand twenty-three as Bernie Fisher Day. And I so make that move to designate October fourth, two thousand twenty-three as Bernie Fisher Day in Ada County.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we have procurement, opening of the bid, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the new business this morning is the opening of RFQ two four zero zero one. Ada County Clerk's Office Remodel Twenty Twenty Four Project. And Noah, we'll get our. Our Bonfire Procurement up on the screen.
Says I share.
Well. It's not quite sharing here. Technology at its best.
I guess.
There we go.
Okay.
So we have Bonfire up there if you're ready for us to open.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, let's open them up. So this morning, we received six proposals for this project. And we're just looking for the name of the firms this morning. So our first firm is C S H Q A. Our second firm is Cushing Terrell. Third firm to propose is Erstad. Fourth firm is G G L O. Fifth firm is Lombard Conrad Architects. And our sixth firm is Z G A Architects and Planners Charter. So those are six firms that have proposed on the project. And we would like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and request under fee negotiations to the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ twenty-four zero zero one. Ada County Clerk's Office Remodel Twenty Twenty Four to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on, we have some operations. Change order number one, rebid Ada County Public Safety Building Window Replacement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's just a unused contingency on a project. Don't come back into our budget.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve change order number one, rebid Ada County Public Safety Building Window Replacement. F Y two thousand twenty-three as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, all right. Change order number one, Arpa Expo Idaho Building and Turf Club Roof Replacement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's the same. I just I just continue to see on that project that our Arpa funds are to return to the Arpa pool.
So the roof doesn't leak anymore?
It doesn't leak anymore, oh, sir.
It's it's brandy, yes.
I'll attest that the roof does not leak right now, and I want to thank you. You know, having patience was a virtue here. We tried to start this project about six years ago to try and get it done. Thank you kindly, Commissioners, for the roof replacement. All of our renters are happy.
Well, good. All right.
And we gave you money back.
Now you gave the.
Well, okay.
All right, all right. All right, I'll accept the motion.
And I just note that that's forty thousand dollars.
It's forty thousand dollars.
That's right. I move to approve change order number one, Arpa Expo Idaho Building and Turf Club Roof Replacement, two thousand twenty-three as listed on the agenda. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. All right, our next under licenses, we have two catering permits and a license transfer.
Chairman, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits. And one license transfer and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have Clerk's Office now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
On having to go live.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley. You guessed what I was gonna come here and talk to you about. After much anticipation and a lot of hard work by a lot of folks in the county that spanned over a year. We went live yesterday with our new financial system and it went generally pretty smoothly. As opposed to our last implementation with H C M, we had a lot of folks working twenty-four hours prior to go live. And I'm happy to report that we didn't have very many folks working over the weekend.
We had paychecks at risk then, as I recall.
We did. No one wants to to risk that.
You're right.
No, it went well yesterday. We had some bumps in the road, as to be expected, but nothing catastrophic. And I'm just so proud to be a part of the team that worked really hard to make this happen, so.
Well, good, well, thank you.
Please congratulate them as you see them.
Congratulations.
Absolutely, congratulations to all of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, everything else you want to tell us?
Nope.
Nothing about elections or anything?
Not today. I was focusing more on our our huge milestone that we that we.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell your team congratulations and thanks for your your hard work and effort.
Thanks.
Yes. Okay, we have the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal as dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, personnel actions.
I move to approve personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the Assessor's Office. Welcome to the meeting, Brad.
Morning, Commissioners.
You have some tax cancellations that are not really cancellations, but rather adjustments.
That's correct.
We call them tax cancellations because that's what the law says.
Are they scratched? So only only eighty-eight this week.
Only eighty-eight?
It's a slow week. Almost four hundred last week. And this should be the last big push that we have before tax goals go up.
Oh.
Just getting everything caught up.
Good. All right. Anything else you want to tell us about the Assessor's Office?
Yeah, Rebecca will be there tomorrow night at Kuna.
Okay.
Be for the Bernie Fisher and speaking about the D M B. Also, our D M B supervisor will be there too. And so, yeah, that should go off really good. And we're hoping to have Lisa there from I T D.
When when will that be open?
That's yet to be determined, but they do. I mean, from what I understand, they do have the funding. One of the biggest obstacles right now is whether trying to get the sheriff's office kind of tied in, so.
All right.
We're we're all in from our side.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion on the tax cancellations.
I move to approve the eighty-eight tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-three as listed on the agenda. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have with us now our distinguished treasurer, Ms. Beth Maun.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley. We're hopping in the Treasurer's Office. It's month end, it's year end. So working closely with the auditor to submit all of our financial reports. As Katie noted, we went live. And shout out to the whole project team. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this. To Katie's point, there's been a few roadblocks, but the great thing is this team has really come together. Whenever something comes up, you know, it hasn't been catastrophic. It's it's a little thing. I needed a report at seven A M, not two P M. They fix it. Or someone didn't have a permission, they grant it. So really working together. So excited to see that, you know, as we continue to approve it, I think it could be really helpful for the county. Otherwise, we are continuing to do all the things to pull off tax relief next month. Including these additional eighty-eight tax cancellations, which we will process this week. So that's about it.
Is is the Tax Commission giving you the the their. Deadline for when they'll provide the information to you on the goes out on the tax bills?
Affirm deadline, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that deadline is the first Monday of November, which is November sixth this year.
And that's a statutory deadline?
Correct.
And they won't have it before then?
They're not.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, they want what they want.
Yeah, so we're modeling what that would look like with just fictitious numbers.
So then you have to get the bills all printed.
Correct.
With a special line on it.
With several special lines. There's gonna be three levels of savings on this year's tax bills.
Right, well, that's a good thing.
And they are, just for people listening?
Sure. The three levels of savings are the school district facilities fund. And then also the homeowners property tax relief. So that's for property owners. That were eligible for the homes of exemption on the second Monday of July. And then additional tax relief, which is applicable to all parcel types.
Well, good. Now, where do you get the our tax bills printed?
We print those in Caldwell.
Oh. Okay. Good. All right.
They are geared up to do that at the last minute?
I certainly hope. We are working closely with them. We have shared with them the additional lines that we're going to need. So they are familiar with, because we did have to revise our tax bill on our templates for mapping the data. So they're familiar with it and will work closely with them to proof those before they go to the press or the printing presses.
Well, good, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Human Resources. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman.
How are you?
Good, how are you today?
Great.
Good. We have two items on there for you. One is involving Expo Idaho and specifically the liquor liability application. It's just a ratification of the signature on that to help us with those additional coverages in regards to that high-risk, low-frequency portfolio area.
Okay, any questions? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the liquor license application for Expo Idaho, signed by Commissioner Beck on October second, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you're gonna tell us about the temporary referral and recruitment incentive program discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. Last year in July, the board approved, a committee had come together, was looking at signing bonuses. Those are common. Out there in the marketplace, they are decreasing in how frequently we are seeing them. But this ultimately went to the history of Ada County. We had previous referral programs that were incredibly successful. So this was the initiative to do that again. It started July fifth. It has continued through the end of this last fiscal year. So we're at a new point of just giving you an update on the program and discussing the future of the program and if it is something to be continued. Some outcomes, we have had eighty-eight individuals hired in that timeframe as a result of the referral program. And we do have seventy-seven who are still with Ada County. Our largest number at this particular office, of course, is Sheriff's Office. They account for thirty-eight of those so far. And their retention rate has been incredible. Two positions that are hard to fill, some temporary positions were filled through the referral bonus. Otherwise, outside of that, every referral that was sent to A C S O via this program is still with the agency. It also has benefited.
How many of them are sworn deputies?
You know, I didn't, I did a quick look. A majority are the sworn deputies. I could follow up with you with an exact breakout. But I do know in the look at that, it was a majority of the commissioned deputies for sure. It has benefited across the whole agency everywhere from operations to attorneys, to the deputies, to forensic tax. It it really has provided a fruitful benefit there. For depending on the position, it costs no more than two weeks in order to utilize savings to pay those out. So certainly something we've worked in cooperation with the Clerk Audit Report. Their office also has benefited from it. H R would be interested in seeing it continue and therefore bringing you the update today to discuss how we move forward.
Okay.
Sounds like it's been useful, beneficial. Thank you.
Absolutely, you bet. Given that, I will go ahead and then work with an updated resolution then it sounds like and bring that back to the table for you all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have approval of some documents, jail inspection, couple of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified in the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have Barbara Parks and Education and Event Center. We have three. Three events.
I move to approve the three Barbara Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we now have fourteen documents to approve. Most of them are renewals of contracts. I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the thirty-three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay. Thirty-three, I'll second the motion.
And that's that included the one that we added.
The one that we add is on the yes, okay. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the Indigent Services, weekly indigent items.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated October second, two thousand twenty-three. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we're in recess. Thank you. Good morning. Today is the third day of October. The time is nine thirty. Board of Commissioners, sitting as Board of Emergency Medical Services District. Is opening our business meeting for today. All Commissioners, Daley and myself are present. We also have with us.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
And we have IT guy and we have a stamper.
We do.
And we have.
I was with that communication.
All right. Okay, thank you. Here we are. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes, okay. We have two resolutions, one resolution for sole source procurement purchase of the American Park. No changes, okay, we have two resolutions, one resolution for sole source procurement purchase of the American Heart Association Completion Certificate Cards.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution twenty-nine twenty-two as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, oh, we have to open a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, I guess it's a public hearing on the.
Oh, yeah, all right, excuse me.
I apologize.
No, I, I'm sorry, okay, I'll open a public hearing on, uh, Resolution number two-nine-two-two. Okay, you wanna get some testimony?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, this is pretty simple, uh, you know, we, we have several American Heart Association courses that paramedics and E M Ts have to attend, E M T, Pediatric Advanced Life Support and Advanced Cardiac Life Support. Uh, the state actually requires that we have an advanced cardiac life support and, uh, card for paramedics re-licensed and so, uh, we, we end up having to use the American Heart Association to get those cards, so. That's the reason for the sole source, because they're the only ones that issue them.
They are the ones.
They are, and then we actually do, uh, work with our training sites and they purchase cards, uh, uh, from us and from A H A also.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution twenty-nine twenty-two and ask for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-nine twenty-two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye, aye? Motion carries. I'll open a public hearing on Resolution twenty-nine twenty-three, Resolution Sole Source Procurement, Contractor for Demographic Verification and Insurance Discovery Services up to and including September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a service that we've been using for several years, uh, what happens when we transport a patient to the hospital, uh, we'll get information from the patient, we'll get a face sheet with limited information from the hospital. Sometimes that information, whether it's on their driver's license, may not be up to date. Uh, and there are times if somebody's unconscious, we don't know much about them other than their name. And so this service actually goes and through a database and, and minds that information for us so that we can send a timely bill out the door.
Okay, any other questions? Do you like to make a comment? Okay. We will close the, uh, public hearing on, uh, Resolution number twenty-nine twenty-three and I'll call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution tw- number twenty-nine twenty-three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye, aye? Motion carries. Okay, we're now to the Claims Journal, I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three regarding E M S expenditures.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we now have, uh, ten agreements up. Any questions or any discussions on any of the agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ten agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have an E M S update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, good morning, uh, since I just gave you an update last Thursday, I don't have much of an update for today, but I do want to say thank you to, uh, uh, the Commissioners and the Idaho's, uh, Association of Counties. I understand from, uh, uh, an email with Sarah Westbrook that you, the, a resolution was passed in support of the E M S sustainability, um, legislation that'll be going into legislature this session, so, uh, thank you for doing that.
Yes, that's now part of our.
Part of our resolutions, but it goes to the Legislature Committee next.
Yeah.
To decide what priority we will, will take and, and, uh, Commissioner Daly is the vice chairman of that committee.
Oh, okay. I, uh, I do have, I was, I'm trying to get a meeting set up and, and I understand she actually wants to meet with me. Representative Planksma, uh, has a draft copy of the legislation, had some concerns, so she reached out to the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association lobbyist and so I'll probably be meeting with her within the next week or two to, to address her concerns or see what we need to do to help.
Okay. All right, any other updates?
That is it.
All right. Is there anything else needs to be brought before the, uh, Board?
No, sir.
All right, well, without objection, we'll be in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.